Has it driven?
Commissioner, you are all set.
Everybody else went up.
We're all set, Joe.
Okay, good morning. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, December twenty first, twenty twenty two meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners to order. It is ten a.m. On Thursday, March twelfth, twenty twenty, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Chapter thirty eight, Section twenty. That order was effective immediately, and until it is rescinded, while a state of emergency is terminated. On July seventeenth, twenty twenty two, by action of legislature, the order was extended until March thirty first, twenty twenty one. We previously saluted the flag at the school meeting. I'm now going to call the role of the Commissioners. Commissioner Stady.
Are you present?
Commissioner Collins. Commissioner is present. We have a quorum. It is our intention, although we're involved in two meetings today, to complete our ten o'clock regularly scheduled county commissioners meeting. We opened up the school trustees meeting at nine forty five and recessed. We will at the end of our meeting go back to the school for the remainder of the program this morning. Hopefully, we'll get through in a timely fashion. So I'm going to go to number three minutes, the open session meeting of December fourteenth.
I had no problem. I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman. Move approval.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Appointment's number four, we have none. Public comment. Do we have anyone has notified us relative to public comment?
No, sir.
No, no comment. Last call. Out in, we are, we are live and on Zoom today. Hybrid meeting. Anyone else? Want to say a public comment? No public comment. Number six, old business. No, old business. Number seven, personnel matters for consideration. We have a number of them. I think we can treat them all the same. They're all at the agricultural school, and they all have to do with the change in rate.
First one is a custodian of the movement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'll, I'll move, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, notice of appointment and maintenance. Paul Dutton of Quincy as a custodian, second shift for the rate stated effective twelve point seven twenty two. So moved.
Second.
Down to bottom.
Is it the bottom of page?
No problem. Page one.
Yeah. Paul Dutton. Did it get cut off?
No, I got him here. All right, that's all right.
There you go.
I did see it. I'm sorry. All right, on the appointment of Paul Duggan as a custodian, second shift. Motion's made in second at all favor.
Aye.
Aye, it is the, thank you. The remainder are all adjustments to, to
Oh, I got it. I got it.
Per diem teachers.
Right.
Substitutes.
Right.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we, we historically, we've been using, if I could speak.
Glad, yes.
Historically, we've been paying a hundred dollars a day, but that, that, we had that for a while, and we were, we were starting to, starting to hear that that was not competitive. We looked at Walpole, Walpole, our most, you know, physically close competitor. They pay a little bit more than that, and so we wanted to be, be competitive. I, I had gotten that feedback over the last two years from our scheduler, the person that we have that schedules substitute teachers.
Yeah.
And she had asked me last year, and then again this year, that she felt like we should increase our per diem rate. I, I believe there, there is room in the budget for that in, in our, in our substitute budget or our temporary line. You know, I, I feel confident that we have that. I mean, the, the cost of it would, would, would be based on how many substitute teachers we have over time. But I felt, I feel comfortable that we'll be able to afford this. Maybe your increase is going to take effect. And oh, is it on here? Uh, one, one, yeah.
Yeah.
So one, one.
Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes.
Real quick. Yeah, those, that's a typical thing to say competitive. That's smart, but just wondering, but you didn't factor that in to the budget we have today, right?
Well, the, the budget we have has a, a fungible amount of money for temporary employees, which covers student employees and various other temporary employees, including cafeteria temporary employees. So I feel like there's room in that budget to accommodate this. If you're asking me whether it was actually intentionally contemplated, that wasn't intentionally contemplated.
But you feel comfortable there's nothing.
Yes, I felt very comfortable that we'll be able to afford this with the budget.
Make the motion. All right. All right, Mr. Chairman, then to save time, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve at the Norfolk County Agricultural High School list of people.
Twenty fourth commissioner.
Yes, twenty four.
Twenty four individuals who are going to be appointed as substitute instructors for the rate stated, the new rate, which will take effect at one one twenty three. I'll make this a collective motion that's presented today to us at this meeting.
Second.
Motion made second. I have a quick question. Twenty four individuals, they don't all work all the time. Designated in their, in their area.
Exactly. These are the people that we have in our stable of potential substitute teachers. Some of these people may never actually work in the school as a substitute teacher. These are just the people that we have got put on our payroll to get paid through payroll if and when they become substitute teachers.
So today, there might be.
Yeah.
Today is a good, it might be two substitutes.
Exactly. A typical day has between one and five substitute teachers, three substitute teachers.
I have no other questions. Motion made second.
Dave's got twenty five dollars. That's how I started.
Ninety fifty nine. Motion made. Dick, we can get you. Actually, we can't. Maybe you'll have to donate your services.
Go ahead, honey.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
I was in college. That was a big deal.
Number eight, payroll and expense warrant for approval.
All right. Oh, did we finish the rest?
Yes.
No, we're all taken care of? Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, all right, sorry. All right, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, let's take care of the payroll and expense warrants so that we can get paid. This is the warrant of twelve twenty one. Uh, first motion, uh, twenty three dash twenty five payroll of the county the amount of a hundred forty two thousand eight hundred eight dollars seventy eight cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Next, Mr. Chairman. Twelve dash oh three twenty two. The expense of the county, the amount of eighty five thousand one hundred forty seven dollars ninety five cents. So moved for approval.
Second.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye. And lastly, uh, twenty three dash oh six A, expense of the school, uh, the amount of a hundred thirty seven thousand one eighty one seventy cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Number nine. Supported the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one. Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very briefly, there are no awards this week. Uh, we have two that are in the queue progressing. Uh, you may see them after the new year. I have one update. We have our first ARPA grant award that is being returned to the county. Uh, the town of Norwood has informed us that ARPA ten fifty five is being returned totaling a hundred twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Um, I believe, if I recall correctly, this was a healthcare consultant. I could be wrong, but um, they're not using that service, so they're going to put the money back into their account and down the road request it for additional purposes. So um, it's the first award of any county, um, being returned, but, uh, we have discussed this with Clifton Marshall. We'll just put it back into the pool and let it be redistributed back to Norwood. So I have.
Okay.
Sure, quick, if I could, real fast. Just want to let the board know that last night was my pleasure to present a million dollar check to the town of Canton, and I presented, of course, on behalf of the board. Uh, that was a grant that we had voted a couple of weeks ago, but that was for a water treatment facility dealing with PFAS. They have a growing problem in Canton and other towns too. So that was a very nice night. Thank you very much.
Okay. So if we have an opera report and we don't have any, any number ten is moved because you already told us.
Correct.
No opera, no opera was. Okay. We're going to go to number eleven, which is bid opening. We're a little early since it says one thirty, but
Since we're out.
Since we started
Yes.
At, at ten. There'll be no bid openings today anyway, so that's a great question. Thank you. Contract awards. We have none today. Number thirteen, approval of fiscal year supplementary budget transfer to capital budget. We have to wait till we postpone that to further into the meeting, correct? Do we get our school business done?
Um, we can do that if you'd like. Um, I know the registrar's here. He's here for his request. You could take him on a tour.
Both of them.
Yep.
I mean, we're not going to be, we don't have the total number yet.
Well, the total number that, um, I proposed in a supplemental request excludes what the schools were asking for, so you can take two votes, one as trustee and one as commissioners later on after you hear the final numbers from the schools.
Okay. If there's no
I'm sorry.
Objection, I'd like to move that till
Can we do that?
Till the end of the meeting.
Okay.
You know.
Yeah, let's do that. But I thought, I thought the commissioners, and only the commissioners can move forward a recommendation on the budget. So I think we'd have to be tricky. We'll have to, we'll actually have to do that. We'll have to take care of our business. Deal with, uh, Reg. Stroud, Donald, and then maybe go back to the trustee, believe it or not, and then when we get that number for the budget, come back to the commissioners.
Yeah, that might have to wait, so.
Okay.
You're probably right.
Whether or not you return this.
Either way, I'd like to put that to to the end.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm fine with it.
All right.
But let's put it at the end. Okay. That's fine.
All right, have you said all that?
Norfolk County engineers.
Request for engineering services. We have two today. One is town of Dover, street right away and topographic survey along Dover Road to be used for hull roadway retaining and wall design. Uh, Patrick.
Patrick was here.
He was here.
I'm online, Commissioners. How are you?
How are you doing with the town of Dover? Is this order, you know, is this?
Yeah, bu- both these projects for the town of Dedham and the town of Dover are both, um, we're both, uh, we have the capabilities to meet the, uh, the needs of both the towns for these projects.
Okay, great.
Great.
I'm going to take a motion to, uh, probably request the services for the town of Dover first.
All right. Uh, I've moved, we approve the services for the town of Dover for a street right away and a topographical survey along Dover Road to be used for roadway retaining wall design.
Second.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote. Secondly, town down, ba- boundary survey of existing police station property located at number six hundred High Street Dedham in Auto Care drawing on N A D eighty three coordinates, which I don't know what means.
What's going on with that?
I'm the father of a civil engineer.
What is that? What is that about?
So, um, y- 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 years ago, when we did the downtown Dedham Square, uh, survey, we put it on, uh, there's a difference between state plane coordinates and, uh, and ground coordinates. So the, the town, uh, for their landscape designer, I, I guess they're going to demolition the, um, existing police station and put a park in, and their designer wants to be able to overlay, um, topographic and other planometric maps using state plane coordinates. Um, so the NAD eighty three is a North American, uh, horizontal datum of eighty three. Um, so that we'll put them on the right corner so they, they can, uh, they can use different types of overlays with their presentation purposes as they go through their park design. So. And we had, uh, done a lot of surveying in downtown. It, it, a lot of it got wiped out when they did the renovation of the downtown project, but we, we uh, feel we're able to, uh, reconnect everything and, and give them what they need in the next month or two.
Thank you. Any questions, Patrick?
No.
Okay, on the town of Dedham, we need approval.
Yep, I'll move, Mr. Chairman, uh, the proof of the town of Dedham, uh, the boundary survey of existing police station of the property located at six hundred High Street Dedham with Auto Care drawing on NAD eighty three coordinates as presented by our engineer, Patrick Higgins. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Patrick. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
Norfolk County Commissioners' calendar twenty twenty three. Meeting notice for approval. Director Cronin.
Um, as the Commissioners understand, in the packet, there's a request to, um, review their statutory required calendar twenty twenty three quarterly meeting notice for your approval. As a annual event and what we do at your office, we notify the the public of our anticipated quarterly meetings. Even though you meet more frequently than that.
So we're going to, we're going to publish it. We've been publishing quarterly notices?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the?
Yeah, I, I got it. So according to this memo, supposedly we're only required to meet four times a year. I know we meet more than that, and some of them involve Tuesdays. So, right, when I read that, right? It's the third Tuesday, the last Tuesday. So are we going to be embracing that? Or just saying we're going to change in lieu of that? We just keep meeting on Wednesday?
I'm looking for you. So the memo, if I may.
Go ahead.
Chairman, the memo indicates that the board has recently voted to postpone Tuesday quarterly meetings to the following Tuesday, Wednesday.
Oh, okay. I missed that. All right. Okay. So that's what we're doing. Okay. Good. Not that I want to meet more often, but.
Right.
Well, safe to say we meet more than fifty, fifty times a year.
Oh, yeah. There's no question. All right. I just, okay.
Well, let's okay the quarterly, and then we'll in the first quarter do the second quarter. That way we can bolster the other time.
Saying the motion to, uh, postpone the quarterly meeting?
No, motion. Oh, motion to adopt. Quarterly meetings, right?
Okay. All right, motion to adopt the quarterly meeting. Effective when? January one?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second to adopt the quarterly twenty twenty three meeting notice for Commissioners. All in favor?
Aye.
Number sixteen, possible postponement postponement of December twenty eighth, twenty twenty two meeting. Was that a quarterly meeting? Why would you call that the quarterly?
So you post it for a quarterly this, this year that happens to fall on December of twenty eighth, so you're going to be asked to postpone that meeting. To adhere to the posted.
Okay.
Yeah.
Unless you want to meet next week.
Yeah. We have, I think we had talked about this at our last meeting, so we're working out. I'll, I'll make the motion to postpone the meeting on December twenty eighth quarterly meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made in second at all favor.
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Report of the county director, and then we'll go to Reg. Stroud.
Sure, very briefly, Mr. Chairman, I will yield to Commissioner Stady to update the board, but, uh, this past week, we had a meeting in Canton relative to uh, the opioid settlement grant, uh, program that we're working with the district attorney's office on. I'll let Commissioner Stady update you on that. Um, I want to report that our, our consultant, uh, Mr. McGowan has reached out to Barnstable County, um, who has an active elderly ARPA program that he will be working with them to see if, uh, there are elements of that that come into uh, a potential Norfolk County program that, um, we've been looking to replicate. Um, yes, uh, this past week, um, our human resources director and, and staff interviewed the second and final candidate for the custodial vacancies. Um, once this individual passes background, um, your custodial staff will be at full staff. It's important to notice, I believe, we have currently four individuals in the custodial staff that are out on extended leave, which even though we're at full staff, is continuing to present a bit of a challenge for Mr. McGowan. Um, we'll be looking down the road at discussing options through Labor Council and the discussions with AFSC um, to figure out a more efficient way to backfill vacancies while these long-term uh, leaves are endured because they are affecting, uh, staffs. Uh, just the notice, I'm leaving on vacation tomorrow. I'll be around, but I'll be out, uh, starting tomorrow through, uh, the end of next week back on January third. That is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of the county director?
Yep, no, okay. I'll give a quick update on the, uh, meeting with DA Morrissey. So on, um, uh, Monday of this week, uh, John and I attended that meeting, uh, with the various groups that represent different towns and county that are all working very hard dealing with the ongoing opioid crisis. It was an excellent meeting, excellent run, well-run by DA Morrissey. I want to compliment him and his staff for putting that together. Uh, each town gave a brief update, more or less, on what they're doing. Uh, the, the person who was, lives in charge of this group is retiring, and her name escapes me. I forgive me.
Jen Row.
Jen Row. So we have there for retirement, which was a very interesting event. And then we welcomed Cindy McDougal, the new person?
Kristi.
Kristi McDougal, who's taken over, uh, a very talented person, and look forward to working with her. So I'm going to, uh, I asked her to put me on the list, and I try to drop in on those meetings on a regular basis if I can. She'd be updated. The idea is that the county, as you know, will be getting grants from the opioid settlement, and, uh, then we're going to be working with DA Morrissey, great person I work with, and dispersing that money to the member towns. And this way, we're kind of involved in the fight against drugs and doing what we can in a different way. So that's a win-win. Definitely a win-win, and it went very well. And we were very well received, obviously, by the board and by the people that are very excited to have our involvement. So passed on our regards, obviously, on behalf of the whole board, and, um, look forward to better things.
Any other comments? I, I, uh, this is what? The tobacco suit? National suit money?
No, it's opioid.
Opioid.
Opioid, I'm sorry. And it's passed down through the state to us.
That's correct.
And this is the second batch of money. The first one we gave to Tom Randolph Police. They bought NACAM.
That's right.
Now we've gone to this.
This was a little sixteen.
Because he already had the structure and the people from all the communities meeting and working.
Right. And it's all, okay. Like you said, we're people there for almost every town.
And we're going to fingers crossed, we're going to get more.
Twenty-two of the twenty-eight towns represented, were represented. I know that. And the, uh, we told them we'd have fifteen thousand with our last settlement, right?
Just under fifteen. Uh, fourteen five.
Okay, roughly, so fourteen five. All right, there you go. But roughly, that's the amount we announced, and they're going to start working on different grants. And as I said, Mike Morrissey did a great job announcing the criteria and how they could get it and making it easy for them to try to get their hands on this money for good purposes. So it went well. It was good. That's all I had.
Thank you, Dick.
Okay, you're welcome. My pleasure.
Uh, if there's no objection, I'm going to hold the last item, which is catchall, and we're going to reserve the right to go back to number thirteen, which is approval of the supplemental budget transfers and capital budget based on uh, future, some work we have to do this morning. And then we'll go back to those and take the necessary goals and close the meeting. So, um, uh, if you don't have anything else right now.
We'll introduce the, the registrar's request.
That's next.
Yes, I want me to introduce it. Sure. So the registrar had submitted a letter to the Commissioners um, earlier this year on September twenty second, two thousand twenty-two, requesting a transfer of seventy five thousand dollars from deeds excise revenue into uh, legal fees. Um, that item has been carried on my supplemental request list. Um, I believe it was about a week ago, the registrar sent a second notice. Um, I'll have him explain, but it's the same amount of money. It appears as though he's uh, pivoting this request to cover potential mediation costs upcoming. So that is where we stand. I'm carrying seventy five thousand dollars from deeds excise currently for the purposes that I believe the registrar will explain.
Okay, registrar O'Donnell. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioner Shay, Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Stady.
Yeah, and this request, yes, uh, as the director outlined, was made, you know, in September. And really what brings us here, um, again, uh, the, the, and in Norfolk Superior Court, the parties have agreed to mediation, and, uh, I know the county attorney urged a settlement. I know, uh, you as defendants entered mediation. Uh, my attorney approached, uh, the registry about mediation, and so to me, uh, you know, uh, that's where we're at with the case. Um, you know, the county attorney's been working hard. I know he's making our attorneys work hard, and when our attorneys are, are working, they're expending services, they're expending legal time, they're expending monies. Um, so, uh, and, and again, I, 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 I appreciate that the attorneys have fiduciary duties and ethical obligations to to go forward. Um, what I wrote in the, uh, December fifteen, twenty twenty-two letter, because again, uh, the request had been made in September, um, was, you know, I, I believe it's unfair to expect counsel. Uh, I, I think it's unfair to expect any attorney to do legal work and not get paid. Uh, but it's unfair to expect counsel for the registry of deeds to be working, uh, on and preparing for mediation, which is agreed to by all the parties, yet not get paid, uh, for the legal time expended. So to me, it's a fairness argument that, uh, you know, I don't want to get into the details of the case unless you, you, you want to. Um, but to me, uh, there needs to be attorneys, uh, there needs to be appropriations for lawyers, uh, who represent the registry of deeds. Um, they should be getting paid as all parties have been getting paid as we move forward on this next phase, uh, which, which is mediation.
Okay. Um, I'm going to open it up for questioning or any discussion you want. I think we all understand this. I've got one question I have, but we can hold it up.
Well, it's a positive thing that we're moving towards mediation. In the spur of the season, I'd like to see, obviously, this matter resolved, you know, sooner rather than later. Uh, I'm just trying to think of a, uh, and once again, a reasonable number, if there is one, to make sure it's fair and it's balanced, that we have an end result that is done once and for all. Um, I'm kind of confused. Maybe I need more information from Director Cronin or others, because you said, okay, he's, Billy, through you then, through you.
Go ahead, sure.
To registrar O'Donnell. I, you're looking for seventy five thousand dollars. Is that what your request is?
The original request in September was seventy five thousand.
We acted on that, if I can remember.
No, no.
Didn't we, didn't we give a certain amount?
No, that was prior. That was a prior.
A prior.
Prior. So, you know, you know, you have to have money in place to pay for legal fees.
Has that money been used up that we did approve?
Oh, when I get bills, yeah, but I mean, that's why, uh, again, we can double check with the treasurer's office, but you know, uh, I saw, uh, you know, uh, July first, the county attorney, there's, oh, he's got at least twenty-three thousand through September thirtieth, so money gets used up. And that's just in the interest of fairness, the, the county attorney. You know, got paid that amount. Could have got paid more. I could double check with the treasurer's, but that was
I'm not trying to be ignorant.
That was only through September thirtieth.
We did give you some money. There was a close vote.
Right.
We gave you some money. I wanted to know if I could, what was the amount of money left on that? If there was any at all, or had it been used or whatever.
I, I, when I get the bills, I get the bill, but I'm sure, I mean, if you remember the gist of that argument was
Yeah.
the, the, the county attorney had a hundred and forty thousand, and we had seven thousand. And then, um, and we appreciate, I know, uh, it, it, there was support here, uh, that twenty thousand was given to us and twenty thousand to the advisory board, so it's a hundred sixty thousand versus twenty-seven thousand.
Okay, so now, thank you.
With the, with the county attorney using up.
So second question, maybe through you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Did, what did you say in the beginning? You said you had seventy five thousand dollars somewhere? Forgive me.
I missed, I mean. So based on the registrar's request from September twenty second for seventy five thousand, that's what I was carrying for the supplemental request.
Okay.
From deeds excise.
Oh.
And as the registrar indicated, he refreshed that request December, what was the date of that letter, Bill?
December, it was in December, just to, you know.
Based on mediation factors, that he's now requesting seventy-five for mediation services. It's apparently the same.
What was that seventy-five thousand at your box someplace? What was that again?
That was the original request from September twenty-second.
Correct, so we have that right there?
No, it needs, it needs respect.
You're right, go ahead, go ahead.
It needs a vote.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
So originally, he asked for the amount in September.
Okay.
And then he refreshed the justification, if you will, a couple of weeks ago, based on mediation.
Okay. Okay, so it's there, but it's not enacted?
That's correct, it's requested.
Okay, so the question would be, to make it blunt, whether we're gonna vote seventy-five or a portion thereof?
That's correct.
Or none?
That's correct.
Those are our options, right?
Correct.
Okay, and you're seeking some money, at least, to go forward on mediation, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay, and I'm looking at a purchase on a history, encumbrances dated, well, looked at it today. And the twenty thousand is encumbered but not spent. So if we have an ongoing issue, is there any reason, registrar, we haven't spent, you haven't spent the twenty thousand?
Well, when I get bills, they.
Players must be, I had a job, I billed my clients right away. I'll get that money for Christmas.
You and me both.
And what the heck are they doing?
We were big Boston firms, I guess. But.
Also.
Must be nice.
But, go ahead. Not having a lot of history with arbitration. I know the arbitration is, the arbitrator we don't pay for, the Commonwealth supplies. We had one.
As a mediator.
Mediator, okay.
And the judge is free.
Okay.
In the sixth sense.
The cost is Murphy Lamry. Michelle will handle the arbitration.
Scott handles that.
Not Michelle?
Scott or Michelle? It's Scott.
Okay, correct, but we'll have counsel at the mediation.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I thought.
Yeah.
It's Scott, it's Scott.
Who pays for the mediator? We don't.
He volunteered his services for free.
Oh, that's right, you're right, you're right, thank you, that's right, you're right, forgive me, okay.
All right, the only one I had, I sat with, and Chairman O'Brien graciously asked me to sit with one on the engineers, probably three years ago now. I dealt with Michelle, though, not Scott, but that's okay, I'm not.
There was a person matter, I think, I think that must've been personnel or union matter.
Yeah, maybe I could've been it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was a union matter. This isn't a union matter?
No, this is related to the lawsuit the registrar has.
Okay. All right.
So is this, yeah, thank you for saying that. This is the mediation to resolve the ongoing issue on the CIO.
Right.
Is that what it is?
The issue is, no, the issue is.
Was that the original suit? There's so many, Billy, no offense, but I can't.
No, it's all one suit.
Is it all, okay.
Evidently, the CIO, not, I don't wanna poison, but it's about the monies. It's about the state law that allows the registry to have deeds excise money, not only a county mandate to the registry, but a certain percentage. That's what the, it's not the CIO, it's the, it's the monies.
All right. So this is the same as the request when we got before, when we had the last spring and went.
I think it is.
We.
And we did give him, we gave, I think, boy, we voted, close vote, we granted some money.
And there's, you know, the second case, which, again, I represent a pro se, supposedly in the mix as well, so, you know, the fact that, that, we don't, the registry doesn't have counsel on that, is A, to hold down the cost, but to B, you know, fairness, there should be counsel.
You don't feel qualified yourself in your own background?
How about this, there's two of you as attorneys, you guys represent the county, I represent myself?
I have done that, you know.
Go from there, but I wouldn't like that either.
I did represent the county a long time ago, you know.
But, no, so, so the monies that are requested are monies for legal fees, because services are getting expended, whether the bills are here or not. You gotta believe it.
This is, I wanna make sure we're clear, we're talking very candid, which is great, it's long overdue, but I mean, we're not talking about the consultancy here, we're not talking about other things that were coming up, because we've had a myriad of issues, which are, no offense, they're getting complicated to sort out in my mind, but this is strictly on the mediation, you're looking for counsel to help you work with us to resolve this matter. Am I clear on that?
There's two pieces of litigation, so yes, it's litigation.
Okay, but the mediator will try to solve both, right?
Hopefully.
Right?
But it's.
That's mediation is.
Right, but it's more about the registry having the ability to pay an attorney, to have an attorney.
Right.
In the interest of fairness, that's what I'm saying, yes, you know. Mediation's the next, is the face here, hopefully resolves it.
Yeah, I understand that, I do. I probably gonna, well, I'll just say that, I think in the interest of fairness, if we're trying to get mediation, and we're trying to go in in good faith, the registrar should get some funds, I can't see giving him seventy-five thousand, but.
Why doesn't he burn the twenty thousand he has now?
Well, he's got it, but he won't, you wouldn't tell us.
I gotta get billed, it could be spent.
Yeah, I think this premature, he's gotta burn his twenty.
Well, what if we, well, when does the mediation begin? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, that's what we're here for.
Make sure I'm going through you, when is the schedule to begin, do you know, the mediation?
I don't know the start dates, Peter.
I believe they wanna get it going through, like, in January, that's what they want to do. They have to get it.
He could hypothetically, I'm taking the devil's advocate position. Register O'Donnell could get a bill from somebody late, like, late December, early January, and then the account is wiped out, it could happen, it may not happen. What if we made a contingent vote? That we gave him a certain amount of money contingent upon the completion or whatever it's, what's the proper word? If that money is used, then this second money would be a backup, and only for that reason. I mean, that way you've got something, there's insurance, not gonna make you happy, but it's a compromise. Maybe you got, that way you got, I wanna make sure we're being fair, I feel it's important to come in, there's a thing I heard in law school with a great professor, a professor on equity. He said, if you look for equity, you got equity, is given to those who come in with clean hands. You gotta come in with clean hands, everybody, we have to have clean hands. So, we're coming with counsel, it's probably not fair for him not to have counsel in the mediation session. I don't agree with all the different things that have happened, you should know that. I know the board's troubled by it too, but maybe through this mediation, for the good of the county, we can get this resolved. I'd love to see that happen in two thousand twenty-three. So I'll make a motion, I would make a motion that we grant, out of that, let's see, what's the proper thing, John? I wanna grant, what would it be?
So it will be from registry of deeds excise revenue into group number two thirty-five, legal fees for the registry of deeds.
Thank you, okay, thank you, so with that caveat, I'm just making a motion, just to get discussion going. I'll move that we grant from the seventy-five thousand, the sum of twenty-five thousand out of that, but only, only to be used upon the utilization and the full utilization of the original appropriation that was granted to registrar O'Donnell is for legal fees. Once that money is used up, that would be there as a backup. I hope that framed it the right way, but you got the sense of what I'm trying to say. So it would be twenty-five thousand, only to be used as contention, so. This will get us going. And if we're moving forward? That's my motion. What is for it, on a Christmas week?
Do we have a second for that motion?
No. No, I disagree, he has twenty thousand dollars, he hasn't spent it. That was hard fought money, I disagree with the twenty thousand, so no.
Motion fails for lack of a second.
Okay, could you make a second, Mr. Chairman?
I could. I have in the past, once, I think, for discussion purposes, but.
May I ask a question? I don't have this proper procedure. Probably, is the amount troubling you, can I come back with a little smaller amount? Just to give him something, in good faith? Can we give him ten thousand, something, fifteen thousand?
Well, let's, we can't think for, for the, we can't think for the board.
Right.
That's gonna meet on January fourth, but this has to be done to get onto the warrant, so to speak, to go before the.
Right.
Diversion.
Yep.
Well, that's the same thing with the schools, different subject.
Yeah, yeah. All right.
I, all right, I'll second it, but I'm not sure. I think it's a little high, I think. I, when I, when I looked for this today, and it was given to me, I fully expected this was to be exhausted.
Right.
Look at the registered bills, not that I, if they come over here, I assume we certainly can, but you know.
Today's day, it's untouched, twenty thousand still sitting there. You pay the bills as soon as they come in, that's what you said, no bills.
In the spirit of Christmas, I would gladly debate you on it, gladly debate you on some stuff, but the county attorney, at least, I'll check with the treasurer's office since July first, has gotten over twenty-three thousand built, so I believe monies are coming in.
Is this one law firm?
One law firm, we only have one law firm, and we only have one lawsuit, so, you know. You know, but again, it's. I think the motion would go a long way.
I'm gonna withdraw that motion, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna withdraw that motion. I'll make a substitute, I'm gonna make another motion, maybe I can get a second on that. I'll move that we grant the registry of deeds in his ongoing mediation action, the sum of ten thousand dollars.
I'll second it.
Out of the seventy-five, ten thousand.
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you.
Under motion, any discussion? Call or roll? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's two to one.
There you go.
Okay, we're gonna have no further discussion about this matter today, thank you, thank you.
Merry Christmas, Tom.
Yep, all right.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, now.
Merry Christmas to you.
It is, back, if I can have a motion to suspend further our meeting and go back to the joint meeting of the commissioners and the school board of trustees.
Oh, yeah, okay. Not a joint meeting, I don't think.
No, to go back to the meeting of the board of trustees.
Put a word up, could?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think the commissioners have some business today to do to approve the supplemental transfer and capital requests.
We do, but I thought we were gonna.
I think, I think the notion is that you're bouncing back and forth between public meetings, you adjourn from one.
Right.
But if you intend to come back, you're losing touch with your regularly posted meeting. I would recommend that you stick with this meeting, conclude it, and then go to the schools and complete it. Take your vote on the supplemental now.
Excluding the schools?
Schools' vote can come up on January fourth by itself.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's a good call, actually, I get it, procedurally, okay, you're right, you're right, okay.
Okay, I have, I have no.
Going meeting after this meeting is over.
So we're gonna vote on our budget except for the schools, right? I got you, go back to the schools, wrap that up, and then on January four, vote against commissioners.
Correct.
The budget that we're gonna put trustees, that's cleaner and simpler, okay?
Okay, it's incorrect, not a fraud.
No, it's good.
We're gonna go back to number thirteen, approval of fiscal year supplemental budget transfers and capital budget was still in our commissioners' meeting.
Thank you, commissioners, in the interest of brevity, I'll try to be brief. The county is proposing a supplemental transfer and capital funding amendment, adjustment budget for your consideration, included in this presentation are five different motions or votes that should and ought to be taken to clarify what we're proposing to do. I believe you have the tracking list of all of the items that have been requested and presented today by each department. I'll be happy to go through each, but in the interest of time, I'll answer any questions. Let me be very brief, after we left the September advisory board meeting, the county was left with four hundred fifty-one thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars and sixty-nine cents in its supplemental fund. Today, I'm asking you to deauthorize two previously authorized items, the Brookline Gutters and Downsides Project that was approved on September fourteenth, and the schools cafeteria study that was approved on September fourteenth as well. Those two items, once you motion and approve to put them back into supplemental funds, will give us a total of seven hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty-six remaining and before we conclude our spending. So, moving on, the presentation, as you can see, includes some highlighted items in green that would be drawn from the registry of deeds account. Moments ago, you changed the amount that is shown as seventy-five thousand dollars for legal fees down to ten, so the motion will have to be adjusted in a moment when you make it. Other than that, you can see where the yellow highlighted areas are just shown for informational purposes. The schools inform us they have approximately sixty thousand dollars worth of infrastructure items that they are paying for from their surplus, so that's not coming from ours, that's coming from the school surplus. It's shown for your informational.
Okay, thank you, yep.
At the end of this, I just wanted to show that with the total costs of spending plus the amount of money that will be moved to registry of deeds and of course, the school surplus, our adjusted total supplemental spending is four hundred and six thousand dollars, and it will just, it'll thus leave us with a total of three hundred eight thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars for the rest of fiscal year twenty-three. And footnote, we did appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars back in September to offset the Wollston Recreational Facility Playground earmark. You may recall the state funded an earmark. While it has been funded, we are chasing the state right now for that money. So in April, when we meet with the advisory board, once the money's in our treasury, I will put that money back into supplemental to finish fiscal year twenty-three. So you could effectively look at the three oh eight and say seventy-five thousand more will be joining this supplemental balance. In addition, there are some transfers that are presented relative to the collective bargaining agreements that have recently been signed, that includes the engineering department.
You want out?
Maintenance. These salaries are also augmented by certain other costs, including stipends, longevity, training, and clothing allowances. The capital budget for FY twenty-three will need some modest changes. We're looking to remove a ninety-nine thousand dollar previously authorized item for the Dedham District Court generator. Bill, if you can.
Billy, you're on speaker.
Thank you. We're gonna offset that item with a new item, the weights and measures program. It's a vehicle and equipment, I think you've received a presentation from Mr. Buckley previously on that program, meaning as we try to stand it up for FY twenty-four, you need to purchase a vehicle and other equipment to ready the program. So it's an offset from the Dedham District Court generator. Furthermore, the schools have offered a series of offsets, a gift back on skid steer steering, camp hall electrical panels, McFarland Hall electrical panels, scissors lift, and cafe updates. The total value of eight thousand three fifty-four will now be put towards the purchase of a new utility pickup truck. So all of the capital transfers are wash, but you need a vote on those as well. And just a note, and I'll be making these notes a little bit more clear for the advisory board and finance committee, looking ahead, as you know, the commissioners are informed by the retirement board that a recent vote will change the methodology evaluation calculation, resulting in a shift that will be on the county of approximately four hundred thousand dollars more per year for the next six years. We are currently completing the employee handbook, I've given the commissioners an update. We still have more edits to do, and we're hoping to get that in front of you early two thousand twenty-three, as well as the new internal control plan that Mr. Abrams is finalizing. We will likely be planning for reduced FY twenty-four budget growth. I'll have more information for the commissioners in January, when I prepare the guidelines, that will go out to the departments then. And then finally, I wanted to give the advisory board a brief update as the commissioners understand on the Quincy District Court disposition and negotiations with Commonwealth. So, if you'd like, I can go to the motion, so we can discuss that, Mr. Chairman.
Question.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you, thank you, John, for that report. I just had a question on motion one, before we do it. So deauthorize the school caf, are we, why are we not excited to cap? I thought we were gonna.
Yeah, this.
We have been in the project?
We are postponing the work, because we don't feel we're in a position yet as a school community to begin a process. We originally thought that it made sense to do a feasibility study of the building, but the more we've talked about it, the more we understand that we have to have an idea of the potential use of the replacement building and what we wanted to include in there. And we, as a community, had had enough internal discussions and been led perhaps by a outside professional to have the right, ask the right questions, do the right thinking, so that we are ready to do this study. We don't wanna spend the money and not be able to get full value out of spending the money. So we decided as a school that we would rather put off that work until.
Something troubles me is that, okay, I respect that, but I don't think the trustees had the feeling that we were moving forward on a cap study. I thought, we talked about even making that positive, literally breakfast, and getting some pressure to kinda influence their influence on school. So I mean, I mean, I don't know where this, we pivoted from going, maybe moving forward on a cap, and now we're gonna abandon it, I mean, I think that should've been something we should've talked about, that's all. I mean, I'm not quite sure why, like you're saying, we, who's that, who's the we? Is it John Martin and you?
School, the school management.
School management team, okay. I mean, I think you should've maybe run that by the trustees, that's all. I thought we were going forward on that study to get something going with cafeteria this year. But I recognize what you're saying, so.
Any other comments?
All right, so, to the motions?
So if you're inclined, Commissioner State, you to read the motions, I was advising, when motion five, it's kind of a catch-all. We're going to revise the number shown to reflect the adjustment to the legal costs for the registry of deeds. So if you'd like, I can give the revised number when you get to motion five.
Sounds good. All right, through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll just follow the motions then.
What, I'm sorry, one more point, I think I got part. The motions will also include, if the commissioners are inclined, the cost of living adjustment of two point seven five for non-union personnel. This excludes the registry union and only the registry union, which we are going to mediation on. So you're capturing the engineering facility maintenance contracts as well as non-union personnel of the county, excluding registry union. You had looked at this, so a week ago, Peter, two weeks ago, and you wanted to revisit this this week, so I'm re-presenting it. So these numbers are inclusive of that in the final number as well. So sorry, Commissioner State, just wanna let you know your vote will include a cola for non-union. Thank you.
So if and when, we set up with the registry, we'd have to have another vote and another supplemental?
Yeah, presumably that'll be sometime in April.
Okay.
Which is the next advisory board meeting.
Okay, I got you, so they're not included?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, all right. Merry Christmas. Very. Motion one, I move to vote to approve the deauthorization of the following items previously funded for fiscal twenty-three supplemental use. Items listed are the deauthorization of the Brookline Gutters Downsides Project and the deauthorization of the school cafeteria study. One item is one hundred sixty-three thousand fifty dollars, and the other is a hundred thousand dollars, a total of two hundred sixty-three thousand fifty dollars. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, next.
Motion two, I move that we vote to approve the deauthorization of the following fiscal twenty-three capital items. The Dedham District Court generator, ninety-nine thousand, the school skid steer, thirty-four hundred, school camp hall electrical panel, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars, school McFarland Hall electrical panel, fourteen ninety-nine fifty-five cents, the school scissors lift, thousand five, and the school caf upgrades, an amount of sixteen hundred dollars forty-five cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote, thank you.
Motion three, Mr. Chairman, I move that we vote to approve the following authorization of the new fiscal twenty-three capital items, new weights and measure program, vehicle and equipment, ninety-nine thousand, the school new utility pickup, an amount of eight thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars, so moved.
I have a question, I know this is trivia, but one truck is ninety-nine thousand, and we can get a new utility pickup for eighty-three hundred?
I'd like to answer that question.
Well, before you do, John, real quickly, the cost shown here, Joe, is not exclusively for the pickup truck. It's for equipment as well as a pickup truck. The truck itself is approximately half that value.
Okay, but let me ask you this, second one, you can get a truck for eighty-three hundred dollars?
No, I'm just supplementing the forty-five thousand dollars previously approved. No, I'm just supplementing the forty five thousand dollars previously approved.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Forty five thousand dollars. It has to be.
I want to go to that dealer.
Read my mind.
Okay, a motion made in second and on motion number three, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
All right. Mr. Chairman, motion four, vote to approve the funding of two county collective bargaining agreements, engineering facility maintenance and the non-union county personnel excluding the school retroactive July one, twenty twenty two.
And excluding the, obviously, the registry union.
No.
We're excluding the registry union from the COLA.
Right, right.
Stating that.
Yeah, it's just the engineering.
It's just engineering facility maintenance.
Correct, and all non-union county personnel.
Correct.
Except for the registry then.
That's right.
Okay, right, so I should amend that.
Registry union, the registry non-union will receive upon this vote.
Right. Yeah, the way it was written, he read it and it says exactly what you're saying, I believe.
Want to be clear. Thank you.
Tell them the motion wrong, is it okay?
No, you did it right.
Okay, so I didn't want you to address me. Okay, all right, whatever. So engineering contract value, uh, for the COLA is at two point seven five, two point five and two point two five. Uh, for the items listed for eighteen thousand ninety eight dollars twenty five cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is.
Second, a facility maintenance contract with a value of inclusive of the amounts listed for longevity hazmat siphon or someone, seventy two thousand nine hundred fifty two dollars sixty one cents. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And non-union county personnel at two point seven five at the amount of ninety two thousand eight hundred eighty six dollars three cents. So moved.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Number five.
Oh, man, this brings us to motion five. Are you gonna give me the number on this?
Right, so commissioners, you may recall that the county utilizes a form, um, uh, Phil, I am tasking prepares it. And this is the endorsement form that you will sign as well as the advisory, and it totals all of the transfer values. Um, I just amended it to reflect the reduction in the registry of deeds legal values. So the new motion, Commissioner State, you could like to write down the new number.
Yep.
It'd be thirteen twenty five, nine two five, point seven one. So that's the.
Thirteen million, twenty five thousand, nine hundred twenty five.
Wait. One million, three hundred twenty five, nine two five.
Sound like a mega nut exit for a second.
Okay. That would be great.
Okay.
Okay, that's your motion, right?
Yeah, got it. All right. So motion five, Mr. Chairman. And vote to approve the full supplemental transfer in capital expenditure totaling one million, three hundred twenty five dollars.
Three hundred twenty five.
Three hundred twenty five thousand. Need more coffee. Nine hundred twenty five dollars and seventy one cents. I got that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, inclusive of new fiscal twenty three capital spending, supplemental items I presented, uh, items funded from deeds excised as shown and associated transfers. Excluding.
Included.
Included. That should be included. So moved.
Exactly. Okay, uh, second.
Motion made in second, on motion number five, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, just, uh, on the IT, I mean, we just got that, uh, for Friday on the IT. And again, I know it's the subject matter of litigation using deeds excised for these items, but, you know, I was just hoping it could be put off to the the April advisory board just to 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 go through this, uh, on the supplemental deeds, um, just on process. Um, because, uh, it was just, it was just given to us Friday, so, um, to go through it and and.
Can you show me what you're talking about?
Well. Boy, I I got an email, um. I got an email from, from John on Friday that basically just says, hey, we're taking this item deeds excise. You want one? So, you know, that is the subject matter of 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 the lawsuit. Um, and again, it's just, just doubled down. I was hoping, uh, there'd be more discussion on that amongst us, uh, to 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 kind of work through these things, but you 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 just can't be taking, you know, deeds excised. I I don't need, it says a hundred and fifty thousand for for projects. I don't have any details. I wasn't given any details. Um, uh, and and we just have to go kind of go through it a little bit more. I would hope that you are elected officials, I'm elected officials, we could kind of go through this before, you know, monies get spent out of deeds excise. The history of deeds excises is is to, you know, to to use that as, you know, when when it's needed and to and 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 to have money, I I you know, you need monies to spend on things. I don't know. I know there's been projects going on over, you know, putting cameras up on district court and things like that, but, you know, for instance, the, uh, I think John, John Cronin, the director, wrote that they will replace a fire alarm in the registry at a cost of eight thousand seven forty five. Gladly do it. Just just send us a purchase order. We'll have it done. But the thing is, uh, when when's that? Uh, when's that work gonna get done, John?
Upon approval.
Upon approval.
That's correct.
Well, this is why I I wish we could put it off and discuss it because, you know, a check with the treasurer's office, you don't have to go by my say so. But the fire alarm's already been put in. Was put in by the maintenance department. It was paid by the treasurer's office, you know, check with the treasurer's office. So, you know, are you, are you getting deeds excised money supposedly for a fire alarm, but using it to pay, you know, I know there's cameras put up so they can look at Director Cronin's car so no one will damage it and things like that? Well.
What was that remark? I want to bring that in.
Well, because, because money, you're putting money from the deeds excise to pay for the fire alarm. I'll do it out of the budget. If that, just come and talk to me. Instead, it's, we're taking it for deeds excise and the project's already paid for. It's already done. Uh, so, and again, um, again, it it's a registry building. I mean, we've paid costs for the building before and we'll do it again. That's why I would rather have this discussed, you know, I I I, you know, just have discussions, you know? Um, you're not gonna change your mind, but at least have some discussions on things. Okay?
Well, we did take the vote.
No, and 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 that's the vote.
Right, that's my point taken. Maybe we need to be.
Did you, and and maybe, you know, and again, you know, I appreciate the vote on on the attorney's fees, but you gotta prepare. And now this is another layer of 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 preparation the attorney has to look at. Um, so, you know, so you're making the attorney expend services. They have ethical duties to 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 represent people and they're expending services and you're saying they're not gonna get paid. Uh, so again, my whole issue is, here in simple on the hundred and fifty, just give me a detail of what it's about. There's no, do you have the detail?
All right, can we get, can we hear from Director Cronin?
Well, you know, the vote's taken. I don't wanna, you know, it's taken. That's, it's not gonna change anyone's minds here. I get it. But you know what? I can't look myself in the mirror. You think I like coming over here and 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 saying these things? I don't. But we're not gonna get rolled over at the registry and this person likes to roll things over if he's running.
You're out of line. You're out of line, Mr. Register.
Well, you run this, you like to run everybody else's.
You are.
But one fifty.
I'm becoming an elected official, sir.
Well, I'm becoming as a director. I'm becoming as a director.
No more conversation.
Thank you.
Until next time.
Bill, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on.
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Enter your family.
Okay, we took the 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 five votes on these motions.
Keep smiling, Shannon.
The aggregate amount. We agree.
Can I give you the right amount?
The adjusted amount.
Yeah, we need the new amount.
We do. It's, uh, one billion, three twenty five, nine two five, seven one, new amount.
We're all set.
And in, in, in final, thank you very much, uh, gentlemen, for your vote. I believe we'll have to circle back on January fourth and deal with the schools.
Right.
Uh, I don't want to get into what the registrar just explained, but trust me, there is a long history of communication with his office between himself, CIO, um, and other information. I'll be happy to share with the commissioners at their pleasure and of course with the advisory board on January fourth. Thank you very much.
That's fine, but we're not gonna talk about it anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. That completes our agenda except for the final item. So unless I'm because I'm, I'm not confused, that's. I'm gonna adjourn our meeting and go back to the school meeting.
Don't you adjourn.
And we have no other items.
Is there any other item to take up?
No.
No, okay.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm gonna adjourn in the hopes that we everyone will have a.
All right.
A merry and peaceful Christmas.
Are we just taking?